I'd like to call the February 20th, 2024 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to read the Ethics Reminder to the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters that are voted or considered by the Board of Commissioners at our meeting this evening. Okay, we come to the Consent Agenda. Commissioners, are there any items on the Consent Agenda that you have a question about? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on our Consent Agenda? We have a Consent Agenda. There's several different items on it. No, 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 it's not, it's not. But we will get, we'll get to that. So, okay, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda and to follow the remainder of the Agenda as published?
So move, second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We now come to our Public Comment Period. I will note that we do have a public hearing on the East Valley rezoning issue later, so there'll be a separate public hearing on that. So if you're here for the East Valley rezoning item, and you want to comment, don't do that now. Let's do that during the public hearing on that. But we will now take public comment on any other matters that the community folks want to speak about. We have, let me just read the process. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. There'll be an orange light that comes up when you've got about 30 seconds left, and a red light will come up when your time's up. And we do ask folks to discontinue their comments once your time's up, as we want to give everyone the same amount of time. There is a list of folks who have signed up, who want to participate in public comment. I'll go through the list, apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. And once I've gone through the list, if there's anybody else who wants to comment, there'll be an opportunity for you to do that, once we go through the list of folks who signed up. And please just come up to the podium to make your comments, and tell us your, tell us your, your name. The first person on the list is Sean Wolf.
Hello, and thank you again for having me. I'm just hoping that you'll reconsider the decision to close the Swananoa Library. As you may know, the Swananoa Library is basically the heart of the Grovemont community and is vital to the Swananoa Valley. I'm very fortunate to work with Head Start, so I do work with families that are impoverished and in need. And the Swananoa Library really is very important for those families. I work with classrooms in the east and in the south. And during that time, I have the opportunity to visit many, many libraries. And each one has its own little personality and their strengths and things that should be celebrated. But the Swananoa Library, even more so, because it's not right on the main bus line, families have to walk there. Every time I go there, there's families, you know, studying in Spanish and really utilizing all of the services that are provided. You can have the same, you know, I know there are other services that are close to, you know, all the other libraries. But with the Swananoa one, again, it really feels like it's super important for those particular families. And I just hope that you please reconsider it, and thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Sean. The next person is Roots Marshall.
I'm also here to talk about the Swananoa Library. I believe that the decision to close the library will be deeply detrimental to the Swananoa community. Swananoa is a growing town with individuals and families moving in constantly. One of the biggest draws is the library, which provides community support and programming for all ages for free. The library is also the only place in Swananoa where anyone can access a computer and Wi-Fi for free, print or scan, borrow books, or even just exist. It's a safe place for kids to spend time, and the children's programming has been a huge help and resource for families in the area. Buncombe County representatives have suggested that members of the Swananoa community who rely upon the library simply travel to Black Mountain instead. But for many of us, this is not feasible. Many people in Swananoa are unable to make the trip, whether due to lack of a driver's license, lack of a car, disability, or responsibilities that keep us close to home. On a map, the Swananoa and Black Mountain libraries don't look too far from each other, but it's a nearly two-hour walk along dangerous roads to get there. For reference, the North Asheville and Pack libraries are only an hour's walk apart along pedestrian-friendly routes and along a major bus route. But nobody would suggest that we close the North Asheville library. The purpose of government is to serve people, and we are not served by the removal of our greatest public asset from one of the poorest areas in Buncombe County. I hope that the county commissioners will reconsider this decision and allow our library to stay with us. Thank you.
All right. Erin Ernst.
Hello, I'm also here to talk about the closure of the Swananoa Library. I speak from my position on the Board of the Swananoa Community Council, which has been in partnership with Buncombe County to provide library services to the people of Swananoa for over 60 years. In those 60 years, a lot has changed, you know? The interstate has bypassed us, the Beacon Mill has closed and unemployed us. But something that has remained consistent in that community is the library. The library is not perfect. We're under no delusions it's perfect. It's much smaller than some of our other branches. It could certainly use some updating and a fresh coat of paint. There's no argument from anyone on there. But it serves the people of Swananoa, which is why it exists, and it's the only place nearby that can do so. Children can come. They can come for storytime, for yoga. They can watch movies, or attend talks that are given. It serves the older population and those with physical or mental limitations in the community. And again, this is a safe place in a world that needs safe places. I am a numbers guy, so let me talk numbers for just a moment. I won't bore you too much. But, you know, recently, a county spokesperson was quoted as it was $50,000 to operate the library annually. If I do my math correctly, in one mile of the library, that represents just 2% of property taxes paid, which seems like a pretty good deal for what we get out of it. Another number that's thrown around quite a bit is 635,000 for repair costs to, quote, "maintain life safety and continue to provide regular operations." As a commercial builder myself, I won't get into the weeds on that, but I'll just say as one example, 52,000 is held for interior doors that don't meet compliance. So I walked that building, and I can only find three doors that don't meet any interpretation of ADA or life safety compliance, which is not $52,000. So just to say, I think the costs here are worth it to maintain this community space. The county has tried to close this before, as recently as 2021. Back then, it was decided we would walk back that decision, and moving forward, we would vote unanimously in this room to continue to provide library operations, improve them where possible, and explore new facilities. So our ask is only that we continue that decision. We ask for nothing more than that. Would we continue to operate? Would we look for new opportunities to serve the community? And if a new facility does become available, you know, we would love to see that. But it seems wrong to take away those services without replacing them. So thank you.
Colby Brown.
My wife and I purchased some property July of last year to build ourselves a home in Lidle Cove. This property was part of a larger 10-acre parcel that got divided into two parcels. We got 4.35 acres. When that got divided, this property was under a larger stormwater management agreement. And when it got divided in half, all the impervious soil went to the other parcel of lot, and none was allotted us due to a clerical error. On our plaque, it says that we are essentially good to go, but Ms. Victoria Hoyland never, from Stormwater, never received this plaque, and she never got to sign her paper, her portion of it. Ms. Victoria is upholding her portion, you know, saying that I need to continue to find better, have engineering, and also have stormwater management, which is going to cost me money that I can't afford to build on. A property that I was hoping to build on, but now is more or less a tense spot unless I do some further, further work. I've consulted legal advice, and they said that really, your two options are to try to hope on the prayers of the person that you bought it from, Mr. Murad Fakuri, that he would help you out, or sue the county, which I don't want to do, and I'm just asking for help. I emailed Mr. Sloan about a month ago, January 15th, and haven't heard back. And now I'm progressing forward, and I've already spent $2,500 in engineering fees already on this property, just trying to move forward slightly. I'm just asking for help, some sort of lenience on this, or something. My neighbor who purchased the other portion is about ready to move into her house, because she got all the impervious soil, and I was left with nothing. It's just a clerical error, and I think it could be solved very easily. I just need some help and some guidance into some way. 4.35 acres, I'm not trying to pave a parking lot, and I can't even put gravel down. They consider gravel also as impervious soil. So any water that falls on a gravel driveway or anything, I have to collect that and put it into retention ponds and other forms, whatever the engineer has. So I don't, I'm just kind of at loss as where to go, because I've went legally, I've went back to my original, and I've went to Ms. Hoyland. And she's been very helpful, however, she's at the end of her road. I just need someone to help me push this through. Had I known that this property would, had been like this, in an email from her, she even said, had this plaque got to her, she would have put a stamp saying, this needs further engineering on the parcel, on the plaque itself. Then I would have totally reexamined my purchase price for the property and reevaluated that. So however, I can be helped in that, or if you can just give Mr. Sloan or someone to, an email back, I don't know if that's, this is my first time at a Commissioner meeting, so I don't know what you do here.
Mr. Brown, could, could we get someone to get your contact information? We'll have someone follow up with you from the county to see if there's anything we can do to be of assistance. Maybe just from Mr. Fruit, if you could just maybe get his contact information, and we'll, we'll make sure someone follows up. All right. Okay, Alexis Gault has signed up, but I think Alexis, are you here for the rezoning issue? Okay, let's hold off, and we're going to have the hearing shortly. Kenzie Steer.
I am also here for the library in Swananoa. I am a member of the Grovemont neighborhood and the Swananoa community. My husband and I moved here with our children three years ago, and a large reason that we moved to the neighborhood was for the library, the park, and the playground. We utilize the library on a weekly basis, and I know that the community views the library as kind of a central, not just, not just location, but kind of part of the center of the community spirit. They do a lot for the children and our community. I know in speaking with the librarians there, that one of their major concerns in hearing that the library was going to be closed, was the children in the community who utilize their services and their programming. And as others have stated, it is, it is a really great place for kids and people who have mobility issues, who can't make it to East Asheville or Black Mountain. I am able to drive. I'm fortunate in that, but not everyone in our community is able to. And so shutting down this Swananoa library would be detrimental to them. And it also is frustrating that this is coming back up again since last summer. This came up, there was a conversation about shutting down the two smaller, smallest libraries in the county and putting them together or merging them in some way. And I was part of the community members who very loudly said, no, we don't want that. We would much rather have our Swananoa library location remain. And so I would like to ask that you reconsider and work with us on ways that we can keep that library open. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's everyone who signed up on the public comment list, but are there any other members of the public who would like to address the commission during public comment, except for the public hearing that we'll have on the zoning matter? Okay. Thank you, appreciate everyone who's come out to speak during public comment. All right, we have a couple of presentations. The first is a proclamation recognizing Black Legacy Month. And Commissioner Al Whitesides will present the proclamation, and I believe Dr. Noriel Armstrong is here on this item as well.
This is old home week for me. Sophie and I came up in Stumptown, so we've known each other for years. County of Buncombe, proclamation, Black Legacy Month. Whereas Buncombe County strives to be a caring community where residents succeed, thrive, and realize that their potential, while actively promoting a healthier, safe, well-educated, and thriving community with a sustainable quality of life achieved through the implementation of equitable systems, policies, and practices that support all people and embracing diversity and inclusion. And whereas in honoring the cultures, traditions, and accomplishments of Black and African-Americans that have shaped our community, state, and nation. And whereas we honor the memory of the millions of enslaved Africans who died during the transatlantic slave trade, and we seek to repair the trauma of past oppression and broken trust by celebrating the legacy of Black cultures and voices striving together to build a future of shared hope and promise for all. And whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson and Minister James E. Moreland laid the foundation for Black History Month, because the achievements of Black Americans were being erased from national history and underrepresented in important policy decisions. And whereas in an effort to increase partnership with and support of Black and African-Americans, in 1975, President Gerald Ford recognized Black Awareness Week by signing a resolution. And on February 10th, 1976, President Ford was the first president to provide a message recognizing National Black History Month. And whereas Buncombe County changed from recognizing Black History Month to celebrating Black Legacy Month, to honor the many achievements and contributions made by Black and African-Americans like Lucius Herring, Edward Stevens, Hester Ford Lee, Roberta Flack, E.W. Pearson, and Isaac Dixon, to Buncombe County's economic, cultural, spiritual, educational, and political developments. And whereas by transitioning from looking back on history to celebrating the legacy of our Black and African-American community members, we create a culture of mutual respect, appreciation, and honor. And whereas the legacy of Black and African-American leadership has long been a bedrock of Buncombe County, including Stevensley High School, the castle on the hill that annually served approximately 900 Black students, where Edwina M. Foster was a member of the faculty and was known as the first African-American woman in Asheville to receive a master's degree. And she was one of my teachers, by the way. And whereas we call our community's attention to the continued need to eliminate racism and to build a society that lives up to the democratic ideals through resolutions like the Declaration of Racism as a Public Health and Safety Crisis, and creation and implementation of Buncombe County's Racial Equity Action Plan. And whereas Buncombe County is continuing its commitment to reparations in collaboration with the City of Asheville, and have dedicated nearly $5 million toward the initiative. And whereas Buncombe County Public Libraries, including Buncombe County Special Collection, offer curated content for all ages about Black legacy, not just in February, but all year round. Now therefore, be it resolved that on the 20th day of February 2024, the Buncombe County Commissioner does hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black Legacy Month, a time to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures of Black and African-American people, to raise awareness about our shared history, to recognize the truth, that truth must come before reconciliation, and to acknowledge the important contributions that Black and African-American people have made and are making within our community and our nation. And it's signed, Brownie Newman, Chair, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. I would just say thank you. I have my family and my shallow family here today, and we are all grateful for all the help that we've got in securing our community. So thank you very, very much for this. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Financial Quarterly Report for FY '24, Second Quarter. And Melissa Moore, our Finance Director, is here to present this item. Thanks for being here.
Hi, good evening. So my presentation today will cover the second quarter financial performance as well as our investment report. So first, I'll cover our major operating funds, with general fund, solid waste fund. Touch on that, performance year-to-date for our capital projects, for the county's capital projects, and then review our performance for our investment. So beginning with the revenue for our general fund. Looking at revenue through the end of the second quarter, which represents 50% of our fiscal year, so your second quarter represents your October, November, December, so all of the information is year-to-date, so it'll cover the first quarter as well. So the revenue for the general fund, year-to-date through, through the end of December, is 246.7 million. This represents 60% of the budgeted revenue. Also, it represents 6.9% increase over where we were at this time at our prior year. Majority of that increase over prior year can be attributed to the one cent tax increase. More details of the breakdown of revenue for general fund can be found on your supporting report on page two. Looking at your expenditures for the general fund, I have two slides. This first one will be broken down with a graph reflecting expenditures by function, followed by the next one, followed by category. So your expenditures year-to-date for your general fund are 207 million. Those expenditures represent 47.5% of your budgeted expenses. You'll notice that in your supporting report on page two, it'll break down each one of these functional areas and reflect what percent of budget they've spent to date. Most of them are within 40 to 50%. Till you get to the last two categories here, those are other financing sources and uses, as well as debt. So your other financing sources, you'll see that those are a little bit ahead, representing more of the annual budget. So because of the, its grant matches, as well as inter-fund transfers, and those are booked in the first quarter of your fiscal year. Whereas the last group of your expenses by function, debt, so you have two debt payments per year. Your first debt payment is always typically going to be much smaller than the last one. The last one will be booked in the second quarter, and those payments will represent principal and interest for that annual budgeted amount. So you'll get your expenditures broken down by category. You'll notice that we have a 7.9% increase over prior year. Majority of that is going to be attributed to your salaries and benefits category. Most of that is going to be attributed to your cost of living increase. Looking at our solid waste fund, revenue year-to-date is 6.2 million. This is 51.3% of your budgeted revenues. Also represents 11.1% increase. We'll continue to see this increase over prior year, each quarter, due to the rate adjustments for landfill and transfer station. Your expenditures for your solid waste fund, year-to-date actuals are 6.1 million, represents 38.6% of your budgeted revenues, I'm sorry, your budgeted expenditures, pardon me, and represents 22.5% increase over prior year. The prior year increase, majority of that is attributed to timing. The prior year increase, majority of that is attributed to timing of operating expenditures. This is the cost allocation plan entry. Prior year, that entry was recorded in the fourth quarter of the year, and this year it was recorded in Q2. So it looks like we're ahead of schedule, just the timing of that entry being made. So it's always going to be based on when the completion approval of that indirect cost allocation plan is completed and ready for that entry. So that covers our major operating funds. Both operating funds, general fund, and solid waste are operating within planned expectations and are no concerns at this time. So shifting over to the county's capital projects, keep in mind, this only represents the county capital and projects that we have. We also have your AB Tech Capital Fund as well as your School Capital Fund that the county also manages. So these projects represent life-to-date budget of $143.8 million. That represents the entire lifecycle of these multi-year projects. So within this fiscal year, life-to-date, I'm sorry, within life-to-date of those projects, we've expended $42.7 million or 32.8% of that total project budgets. Year-to-date, we have expended $7.9 million. Some of those projects represent the solar projects, parking lot improvements, Woodford Greenway, Forty Cox Interior renovation. Additional details by project can be found in your supporting report in Appendix C. Now looking at the performance of our investment portfolio. The main takeaway here is that year-to-date earnings for the investments is $3.4 million. We're enjoying seeing a higher interest rate environment from an investment perspective. The assets under management through the end of December is $162.9 million. That represents 42% of the total cash and investments on hand. If you're comparing two prior quarters and report, that percent of invested cash was higher. And you'll notice that when I come back to you next quarter, that that number's going to be even higher than first quarter. And the reason is because the cash on hand has a large percentage of the allocated revenues that we have, all really concentrated due to those property tax coming in a lot in December. So at the end of December, they're still sitting in our depository account before we move them out into investment accounts. And we'll also see that finance team has taken a lot of focus on cash forecasting, and you'll see a lot more funds under investment going forward. So out of the $162.9 million of invested funds, this donut chart here shows you kind of where those funds are allocated, between the largest portion of our account investments being in our investment pools. Those are still considered very liquid. We can move that money out into our depository account to pay obligations within very short notice, whereas the other portion of U.S. Treasury agencies and cash portion, you wait till a maturity date to convert those to cash equivalents. So the table on the right side reflects return on your rate of return by the different firms, where we have investments, and broken down by the different maturity levels. So that concludes my presentation. Did you have any questions for me?
I'll just share that I appreciate the format, how you're sharing this, and then the supplemental materials. I'd really like the net county cost graph that you included in there. That's very useful, as well as all the policies and everything. So thank you. Very, very nicely done. Thank you.
Good job, thanks. All right, last presentation is on the Community Development Block Grant Quarterly Update. Matt Cable's here to help us out with this.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. I'm here to provide the required quarterly update. This update is required by the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division anytime you are utilizing TDBG in our funding. This slide contains a lot of information. It's the regular information we provided each quarterly update, just generally describing the amount of funding and the projects that that funding is intended to support. We were awarded a $400,000 grant through the North Carolina Department of Commerce. This funding is to support repairs, so urgent repairs within our community. As these are federal funds that pass through the state, there are a number of requirements, including our selection processes, as well as identifying a local nonprofit partner. We have successfully identified a partner through the Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity and are currently working through contracting and also to seek an extension with the North Carolina Department of Commerce to be able to expend as much of the award as possible. So as I mentioned, we did an RFP process to select the recipient. We have a copy of the signed contract back from Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity, and we'll be completing the process of contracting very shortly. And the next steps will be that Habitat will undertake, with our assistance, a selection process, the forming of a committee that will convene, and then we'll select the sites. This is on a first-come, first-served basis, so they'll be going through their existing docket of requests for repair, and then we will be identifying eligibility with the program. There are a number of steps that are listed additionally under the remaining activities. Again, these are federal dollars flowing through the state, so there are environmental requirements that must be met, environmental reviews. We will then also, basically, once those environmental reviews are prepared and approved by the state, will begin the repair process, and it is a reimbursement-based activity. So once the repair has been completed, the reimbursement will be sought from the county, and then we will seek that reimbursement from the state. And I am happy to answer any questions about this required quarterly update.
And when you said reimbursement, so Habitat, we'll reimburse Habitat, and then we'll get that reimbursement? Are you talking, is that correct versus the homeowner?
Correct. Right, so Habitat incurs the expenses, we then reimburse them for those expenses, and then we can claim against the grant for our expense.
Okay, thank you. It's very exciting. I mean, $30,000 for these homeowners, that can make a significant change in their HVAC system or other needs. Wonderful.
All right, Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now come to our public hearing on the East Valley LLC rezoning request. And Haley Mathis from Planning is here to help us out. Thanks.
Thank you. My name is Haley Mathis, and this is the review of ZPH 2023-00040, East Valley LLC map amendment. This hearing was properly noticed and all applicable parties notified of the meeting in accordance with general statutes and county code. This includes a legal ad in the Citizen Times, notices mailed to property owners within 1,000 feet of the subject parcel, a notice on the county's website, and physical posting on the property. The applicant and owner is Mark Wright of East Valley LLC. The parcel is located at 1700 and 1702 Tunnel Road. The parcel is 0.99 acres, current use is single-family residential, and it is served by public water and sewer. The application is to rezone from R2 Residential to EMP Employment. You can see the current zoning on the left-hand side of the slide and the proposed rezoning on the right. The parcel is located in an area identified by the 2043 Comprehensive Plan as Mixed Use One, which is a growth area. This chart shows the dimensional standards of the zoning districts and any changes. The minimum allowed lot size would decrease if the rezoning went through. Required setbacks off the property lines would increase, and the maximum allowed height of structures would increase. The types of uses allowed on the property would increase in intensity. R2 zoning is a primarily lower-intensity residential district. EMP zoning would allow a variety of commercial and industrial uses in addition to the residential. This map shows the surrounding development, which includes single-family residential, a medical office, vacant land, manufacturing, and many storage facilities. This rezoning request has been found to be consistent with the number of county plan recommendations, such as the future land use map, utility and transportation availability, overlay protection areas, and compatibility with existing uses. Based on this, staff recommends approval. At the January 22nd Planning Board Public Hearing, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners. Please let me know if you have any questions about the staff report, and I believe the applicant is here to answer any further questions as well.
Okay, thanks Haley. Commissioners, are there any questions at this time for the staff? And Mr. Frew, would it be better for the applicant to present their comments during the hearing, or is it okay to present them prior to the hearing itself?
I think generally the board takes that kind of comment at this point before the public hearing.
Okay, great. All right, if the applicant would like to share any information about the request of rezoning, we'd be happy to hear it.
No, she covered it all.
Okay, all right. All right, let's go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. I'll open the public hearing at 5:56 PM. Any members of the public who would like to speak, feel free to come on up. And as with our earlier public hearing, you've got, you'll have three minutes to share any comments that you have. It'll be the orange light at 30 seconds, or red light when your time's up. Thanks for being here. Just let us know who you are and let us know what your comments are.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for your service to our community. My name is Alexis Galt. I'm a resident in Buncombe County since 1989, and I'm a very small landlord for my business. I have a handful of properties that I manage with the goal of keeping some affordable housing, affordable rental properties in Asheville. My son and I recently purchased the property directly behind the property in question, and we purchased that. There's three abandoned residences on that property, which we are in the process of renovating for the purpose of rental. My son and I are, again, very small developers, small business, and we've put our entire savings and retirement into this project. And of course, when we purchased it, it was understood that this area was residential, and the impact is very hard to understand, hard to know, given that the EMP or employment rezoning pretty much gives complete freedom to the developer to do absolutely anything. It can be a strip club, it can be a factory, it could be very loud, it could attract disreputable people to the area. Despite having reached out to the rights multiple times via email, phone, to their personal phone, as well as to the business, no one has bothered to let us know what the intentions are for the property. So really don't know if we object to it or not. It's the person that was at the last meeting said that they were planning a 30,000-square-foot building on the property, and that they didn't think it would go above 25 feet. Obviously, it could go up to 90 feet. This greatly impact not only the view of the residents living in our property, but could impact the traffic flow as well as noise. We have no idea what, how those things would be impacted. I'd like to ask that the board deny this request for rezoning, given that the majority of people that live in that area are residences. I understand that there's some warehouses there and a dental office, but none of those attract a lot of traffic or people to the area, and we would just like you to keep that as a residential area for the benefit of everyone living in that area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak during the public hearing? All right, I will close the public hearing at 6:00 PM. Commissioners, any questions? If you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking down. Does the applicant wish to share any other feedback or comments?
Just what she said was inaccurate. 30,000 square foot building won't fit there. It's 10,000 foot, no more than 25 foot high. And if anything, a building there will reduce the noise. The property in question that she's talking about does not even, it's not right behind that. There's another piece behind us, then it's hers. So she's, there's a residential buffer of property between this one and hers. It's not going to affect anything.
Okay. Hey, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly on this. So you believe based on, if the property were rezoned, based on the amount of land available, you could only build a 10,000-square-foot building, and the height limit on it, under the new zoning, would be 25 feet?
Well, no, the height says 90 feet, but that seems ridiculous to me because that's high. But what we're planning, just so she would know, it's 25.
Okay, so the height limits 90 feet.
Yes.
The particular purpose that you have in mind, which I will remind all of us, you know, once the rezoning is done, the property owner's allowed to build whatever they might want to do. So obviously, we're not, we can't hold you to...
I don't have enough money to build a 90-foot...
You're sharing information on what your plans are, is for a 25-foot project. Okay, any other questions for the applicants while we have him? Okay, all right, thank you. I guess I have a question for Haley. I'm back to this, and maybe if you could just also chime in on some of these questions around, like if the property is rezoned, you know, what, could you, could you share what the planning staff's understanding is of like, how large of a building could be built there?
Sure, yeah. So like you said, Brownie, with rezonings, you're not looking at any particular project. You're just looking at the, at what could be done in general with the, with this new zoning district. So employment, the maximum height is 90, and that's just something to think about when you're considering the rezoning. So if Mr. Wright were to sell tomorrow, a new owner could come in and, you know, do something on the property that's completely different than what he has in mind. That's just something to keep in mind with rezonings in general. The property is only just under an acre, 30,000 square feet. An acre is like 43,000 square feet and change, so it would be a little out of scale, drastically out of scale, probably for that site. I can't speak to if it would fit or not, to be honest. I don't, I can't, I don't have a site plan in front of me or any tools like that, but that would be a pretty big project for this site, to be honest. It's just under an acre, and what else can I tell you about this? The planning staff, part of the analysis from the Comprehensive Plan, it is in the Mixed Use One area in the future land use map, and so this would fit really well with that. It's also on Tunnel Road, which is a major transportation corridor, so that would also fit well with the transportation corridor. It's not in a floodplain, it's not in the steep slope or any of our overlays. It also, it would not be spot zoning, so it does border the employment district already. Yeah, that's a big part of the analysis is the surrounding. Yeah, that's a big part of the analysis is the surrounding parcels and the future land use map and being on a transportation corridor.
Okay. Other questions, Commissioners?
Haley, I guess while you're up here, can you address, there was the one, one item that was not consistent, had to do with the transition in, between the properties. Can you speak to that?
Yes. So one of the, yeah, let me just go to that section really quickly. So if it were to be zoned EMP, this property would have a direct adjacent border with R2. So there wouldn't be like a transition zone between R2 and EMP. It would just be an employment and a residential district. You can think about transition might be something like R2, R3, you know, EMP or R2 Neighborhood Service EMP, so like sort of like a gradual shift. But, but what we are saying here is that regardless, you would have to buffer any property lines that are adjacent to residential uses anyway. So you'd have to use a vegetative buffer, which there is a vegetative buffer that already exists. And if there wasn't, there would have to be something put in place to buffer between the employment use and the residential use.
Let me ask this. So the employment district is pretty intense zoning district, right? In terms of what's theoretically allowed, right?
Correct.
Like you're saying, like I described, like a building of this big size, like, yeah, that would be a lot for the site, but I think that's kind of the concern, right? Is that it would allow that.
Sure.
Like, you know, 90 feet? And I mean, and that's, again, it's probably, it may not make a lot of financial sense to build something like that there, but that's, that is what this zoning classification authorizes, right? You could have a multi-story, you know, massive structure there. Was there a consideration of any like commercial but less intense commercial designation for the property?
So unfortunately, the EMP would be the only option because of spot zoning. So this property already borders EMP, and that is the option, according to the spot zoning analysis. I couldn't do Neighborhood Service or Commercial because it would just be in a sea of R2 and then employment. Or it would, it wouldn't fit into the spot zoning analysis. You can't just have a one random parcel that isn't touching another parcel of the same zoning to do the rezoning.
Even though there's other CS, like right down the street?
Yeah, but there's not a decent.
It seems like, I mean, I'm sure there's some legal analysis that says what you're saying is true.
Uh, yes, there is a legal analysis.
Crazy, right? Like if it's a better zoning district than this, that, let the property owner do what he wants to do, and neighborhood would be not just freaked out, but...
I was asking you if you can set conditions on this rezoning.
We can, it's just a straight rezoning, so.
Yeah, we don't have conditional zoning, so it would just be, I don't believe we could do, okay, no.
That's too bad. You know, I guess just, this is, I don't know, this is more of a high level question, perhaps more philosophical. But, you know, when you have these residentially zoned properties on these commercial streets, right? Where there's a lot of commercial things there. I guess part of what I kind of wrestle with with some of these kinds of decisions is that, I mean, it's very hard to, I think, to vote against the request because there's so much commercial development along these kind of commercial streets already. It seems, it would seem unfair to say, you know, all a property owner can do is to maintain this as a residential property. And frankly, it may not even be that attractive as like a small scale, single family property, right? So that seems unfair from a property owner's standpoint. But then if it's just, you know, I mean, the time I've been on here, I just, I don't remember ever not approving one of these rezonings to commercial, on these commercial corridors, which makes me wonder like, why are they, why are they zoned residential in the first place? Which I think does kind of create some, you know, I think the neighboring property owners sort of rightly asked, well, why was it, you know, why did you zone it residential? Because we were sort of, yeah, go ahead.
You have to remember that we didn't have countywide zoning until 2009. So when we were doing the zoning map back in 2009, it was a long time ago. I vaguely remember it. We were thinking about consistency. So that's why you do have these commercial corridors where you have residentially zoned property, where commercial businesses have sort of built up around them or multifamily has built up around them. It was a, it was the will of the board back then for that consistency. Like if you had a residentially zoned property, they wanted you to maintain, like if you had a residential property, they wanted you to maintain that residential zoning. So because we didn't have zoning until 2009, there's some inconsistency out there, which hopefully through the comprehensive plan and the growth equity and conservation map, that'll change over time.
Appreciate that. All right.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and second to approve the request for the rezoning of the property. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, appreciate everyone who came out to speak on this item. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the county managers' reports.
Our reports, sir.
We have no items under old business, under new business. There is a resolution of intent to donate surplus personal property, and Tim Love will present this item.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. We presented this item to you at the briefing two weeks ago. I'm going to kick us off in this discussion, but wanted to mention I'm joined by a couple of folks today. With me is Sarah Nichols from Land of Sky Regional Council. Sarah will be talking about the device refurbishment program that we discussed. Also here is Ron Ventorella, who is one of our county staff. He's our procurement manager, so if there's any specific questions about the finance or procurement regs, glad to bring Ron up. So I'm going to go ahead and kick us off, and then I'll turn it over to Sarah, and then I'll close this out and seek action from the board. So in terms of overview, you've heard me say this, but for the, for the public, Buncombe County refreshes employee laptops on a regular basis. These laptops are stored and then ultimately sold through GOV deals, which is the requirement of our procurement policy. Through our discussions with Land of Sky on many issues broadband, there's been an issue identified related to broadband adoption and digital equity concerns and the need for greater access to devices. County staff have identified an opportunity to partner with Land of Sky to increase access to devices by disposing of surplus laptops through a device refurbishment program. In order to enact the program, however, a resolution is required from the Board of Commissioners to direct the laptops to Land of Sky rather than the current adopted surplus procedure, which would have those devices go through GOV deals. The request before the commission today is to approve the resolution that would authorize the donation of these laptops to Land of Sky for a defined period, which we're recommending is three years. From a digital equity perspective, won't get too deep on this one, but, you know, we always talk about issues around access and accessibility. We spend a lot more time talking about infrastructure issues than we do about accessibility, but still really important. Primary issues for this lag, folks just don't have access to devices, but also the cost of access can be expensive. 2021 census data shows that about 10% of Buncombe County's population has no access to a digital device today. So that brings us to the Land of Sky refurbishment program. I'd ask Sarah to join us and walk us through that.
Thank you for entertaining this conversation. It's very exciting. This is our first local government to kind of sign on to this. Umbrella of digital inclusion expanded beyond just the infrastructure issue, which we're deep in the process. Our data with the county from 2018 showed that the reason people don't connect was a myriad of issues, not just the wires and signals to their house. So this could be the barrier that keeps them from accessing the world of the internet and what it brings, jobs, healthcare, education. In this case, we have proposed a device refurbishment program that we have funded through the Dogwood Health Trust. And what we will do is work with our partners. Over the summer, we gathered a forum and assembled a committee. Some of my friends from that committee are with me today, Operation Gateway, RHA, we've got Emergency Tech Repair, and through the trees, that have been meeting to kind of look at how we do this as a team. How do we connect the surplus of devices, the e-waste that goes into our landfills, with a process that provides a training program and then provides the device to the end user? We have the funding to implement it at this point. This donation of devices and the sustainability of it will give us a streamlined process and enough test product to put that back into the community. We have been cultivating a list of people, organizations, that want access to this to implement their own digital inclusion programs. So this is how we're building the capacity of practitioners in our region doing this work. We have Meet the Geeks, and some of our area computer repair people who've identified this as an issue, donating the labor and the training program at this point. So this donation will kick off that whole process.
Thank you for that, Sarah. And, you know, some of the notes in terms of the objectives of the program, again, diverting e-waste, increasing access for folks to devices that enable job training, skill development, so aligns with a lot of the priorities of this board. In terms of kind of the final aspects of the program, I'd ask Sarah to join me again and to walk through a little bit of the process. When we met last time at the briefing, there were questions about, you know, how do we know where the devices will end up and the reporting on that? So Sarah, if you could chime in, that'd be great.
Sure, we've run a few pilot programs with entities who've asked for devices. Meet the Geeks will take the devices through a program, along with some of the other committee members, to actually do the training. So Meet the Geeks has offered to host hub tech nights where anyone can come. Ideally, some of the people who will be benefiting from the program to learn the skill of the actual hardware device refurbishment. We'll host these tech nights. We have community colleges buying into the program, university systems to offer their space or their other tech resources to do it. And then we work with organizations who want to offer the program. So at this point, we have been giving devices to Operation Gateway, my daddy taught me that, the One Buncombe Group, HACA, all have been utilizing this. We continue to get calls from a lot of senior housing facilities. And once we have devices coming through the program, we will do a significant outreach campaign to get more organizations involved with what kind of devices they need to serve their populations. We're prepared to keep them in Buncombe County through a tracking system so that they stay within the community for covered populations that the state has already identified.
Thank you for that, Sarah. And, you know, a key question from our last session was, you know, who's impacted with these devices? And the Land of Sky team is prepared to track that and report on that. So a key piece of this and something we hear about a lot is the ability to report on demographic data for some of our programs. And so Land of Sky is partnering with us and willing to make that commitment. So a really exciting opportunity. In terms of the goal of the program as a whole, seeking to refurbish 700 devices per year, that, you know, more than covers what Buncombe County is able to provide in terms of devices, but still ambitious, and we're excited to work with them. You know, so we've provided a little bit about what the program could look like in the future, but important to understand current state, what's happening within Buncombe County related to these devices. So our laptop refresh and revenue rates, that's exciting. So revenue from GOV deal sales is about $17,000 to $23,000 per year. So when we refresh all those laptops, we put them up for auction, that's the range of what we see in terms of what the county recoups for those 450 to 500 devices per year. And that's our general refresh rate. Again, based on our current policy, the short of it is, any devices that are identified for surplus and it's in bold will be offered for public auction via an auction without further notice. So that's the process that we follow, and it's led by Ron Ventorella again on our team. So brings us to kind of the request for board action today. The recommendation from staff is to approve the resolution that would donate the laptops to Land of Sky for a defined period of time. We're recommending three years to allow the program some time to grow, but not indefinitely because we need the ability to potentially take the program back if necessary. Authority to do this is listed in the second bullet. I won't read the statute to you, but that's the why. Any laptops that are purchased with federal funds must be disposed of using federal guidelines, and so we'll adhere to that. And then the request before the Commissioners, simply approve the resolution as presented, but welcome any questions you have for myself, for Sarah, or Ron, who's also here.
Well, I'm excited about this program. It's a smart investment, and I'm really, I know Sarah and this team will do a very good job on implementing this. I will make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into an interlocal agreement.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. Thanks for bringing this forward and for everyone's work on it. It's a really cool project.
Excellent, thank you for your time.
All right, next item under new business, budget amendment for increased allocation of bond proceeds for the Lake Shore Villas project. And Chloe Donho is here to present this item to us. Thanks for being with us, Chloe.
Yes, hello Commissioners. My name is Chloe Donho, I'm the Affordable Housing Bond Project Manager. Today, I'm presenting an update on and a request for board action for mountain housing opportunities, Lake Shore Villa project, which is one of our fiscal year '24 bond-funded new construction projects. So the project's total AHSP bond funds commitment is around 3.3 million. As a reminder, this amount was amended in September of 2023 when staff brought a budget amendment request to the board to replace the project's second COVID recovery funding allocation of $718,616 with additional AHSP bond funds. At the time of the September budget amendment request, MHO identified the need for additional funds to fill Lake Shore Villa's funding gap. The Affordable Housing Subcommittee considered this need for funding at their September meeting and suggested that MHO apply for home funds available through the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium. The Lake Shore Villas project was allocated $750,000 in home funds during the 2023 housing consortium funding process, making it eligible to receive an additional allocation if available through a reallocation process. Unfortunately, the housing consortium has not undergone a reallocation process in the last four months as expected, despite advocacy attempts from staff and Commissioners on the Subcommittee. Therefore, the unallocated home funds are no longer a potential source for Lake Shore Villa's funding gap. Since September, project costs have gone up by approximately 1.2 million. MHO has committed to increasing their deferred developer fee by 420, almost $421,000 to mitigate rising construction costs, but have indicated a persistent gap of $299,702. Additionally, MHO has undergone a housing and urban development mandated environmental review for the project's home funds and a wetlands permitting process through the Army Corps of Engineers. MHO provided staff with reports from these processes, which set restrictions on the months when tree clearing can take place on the site to avoid potential effects on federally endangered bat species. Therefore, MHO is facing an upcoming deadline of March 31, 2024, for tree clearing in order to meet the restrictions set by these processes. MHO has indicated the project's funding gap is prohibited to their ability to close on the project and to meet their restricted deadlines for tree clearing. Staff presented this information to the Affordable Housing Subcommittee on February 6, and the Subcommittee recommended increasing the project's allocation of bond funds to fill their final funding gap. Therefore, we are here tonight to ask the board to consider increasing the project's allocation of bond funds to fill their funding gap of $299,702. increasing the project's allocation of bond funds to fill their funding gap of $299,702. And I'll take any questions you have.
Thanks, Chloe. Any questions?
I have one question, Chloe, can you elaborate? You mentioned the, the home funding that you were trying to get and advocating for, can you speak more to that? Who is that consortium with the home, home funding?
So the, the home, the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium, they facilitate the allocation of home funds, which are federal funds. And Asheville, the city of Asheville is actually the jurisdiction that facilitates that consortium. I am not sitting on that consortium, we have two staff members in community development who sit on that, and so they help to, that group meets and then they allocate those home funds to eligible projects. When a project does not receive federal tax credits as it had indicated it would, then it would, those funds go back into the pool of potential home funds. And so that's the, the Subcommittee had noted that there was more funds that were unallocated, and so that, those are the ones that they had wanted to.
And so that's what we attempted and they never did respond?
So there was unfortunately never a reallocation process. There, there's a lot of things going on there, but we're, yeah, unfortunately, it's no longer an option for, for this project.
So the county has a seat at that table too, you know, it's a regional thing and other, like Henderson County has people on it too, Buncombe County does, Madison County does. But it's administered through the city, so they're sort of the lead agency on facilitating stuff, so. So this would have been like an off-cycle additional funding from them, when we kind of encouraged them like, hey, could y'all focus on this? Great project, just has a, you know, modest gap, but just wasn't able to come together at this time. So of course, we have our bond funds too, and this is why they're here. You know, the home funds would have been a great use of those funds, but it just, if we want to move the project ahead for the timing reasons, it looks like it's up to us.
Those are great questions, Commissioner Wells, and it would have been great to have those funds reallocated to mountain housing opportunities, but unfortunately, that didn't happen. And I think if we're going to continue to be really serious about affordable housing and literally putting our money where our mouth is, as Buncombe County and Commissioners, then we're going to have to take a lot of additional responsibility with, with these challenges. So with that said, I would like to move to approve the budget amendment of the Affordable Housing General Obligation Bond to increase the Lake Shore Villa's commitment by $299,702.
Further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Chloe, thanks so much for the presentation, Mountain Housing, thanks for getting the project here, please go build the project right away. And I know it's like, you know, this is in the category of nothing's easy, so we appreciate your persistence and we look forward to a great project going ahead, so. Okay, um, let's see, what's next? Under board appointment, we've got a couple of board appointments, let's do those. Okay, we have the planning board, and then we've got, let's do that one first. So there's one reappointment.
I move to reappoint Tim Collins.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and then we have two additional appointments to make. And we, or up to three, actually, we have up to three. We did some interviews today, appreciate everyone who applied to it. And there was some discussion about, we're, you know, we're sort of in midstream on a couple of really important policy items. So I think the thought is we might want to just appoint two tonight, and then we'll revisit the question of the other one in the near future, so. Okay, so it's always a little bit, well, why don't we just, I think the easiest way to do this is to just go down the line here, and every Commissioner, you get two votes. So cast your two votes, and we're going to add them all up, and whichever two applicants get the most votes would be appointed tonight. Commissioner Wells will start on your side.
Okay, I nominate Carl Coon and Jay Marino.
Same.
Same for me.
All right. All right, so Carl Coon and Jay Marino will be appointed at this time, and then we're going to revisit the question around the timing to appoint the additional person that would be in the position that the Chair serves in now. But we want, we don't want to take the Chair out like kind of right at this moment because there's important policy items that they're midstream on. So, to be continued on that one. On the board of adjustments, we have one reappointment, and then we'll do two alternates as well.
Motion to approve Craig Allen as the reappointment.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, and then we have two vacancies for the alternate positions. I'll nominate Paul Wilzinski and Jeff Gilton Booth. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, and then on the Riverfront Commission, there are two appointments, we have two applicants.
I move to approve David Taylor and Amy Kinsley.
All in favor, say, I'm sorry, thank you, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Excellent. All right, we come to our county reports on boards and Commissions, are there any updates?
We have a back.
Whoops, sorry, thank you. Double-sided. Asheville Planning and Zoning Commission, we have one appointment, and there is a recommendation on that one.
Motion to appoint Jason Cycle?
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? On the Audit Committee, there's one appointment open?
We'd rather hold that because we normally interview the Audit Committee.
Okay, very good, all right. Okay, now we come to the reports on boards and Commissions. Do any Commissioners have any updates to share on any boards and commissions you serve on?
I do.
Yes, sir.
And this is one that we support, and I'd like for us to know that it's really working to help the people of the county. And this is EDC from Economic Development from the Chamber. And let me give you several, just, I'll point out three, I have six here, but that'll show you. One, lifetime metrics for 10 years of running the Elevate Incubator. During that time in the incubator, Venture Asheville startups are created, have created startups of 384 jobs and an average, and average wages of $86,000. Generated over $110 million in sales revenues and over attracted $58 million in outside equity and angel funds with support from the Venture Asheville program. Fifteen of the fastest-growing startups recognized at the Venture 15 in December. And if, if you wanted to name a few, like the Grind came in, again, it was fifth, first the year before. Computed annual growth rates are measured by an accounting firm and announced live at the event, and this has been very successful. Growth metrics for the top 15 fastest-growing startups recognized at the Venture 15 include sales revenues over $286 million, 358 employees with 192 jobs to be added in 2024, and industry breakdown showing local startups and high-growth hospitality ventures. Tech, health, and wellness. And last, I would like to point out the overview of the Inclusion Hiring Program. This indicates the partnership has grown to include over 30 certified employer partners in five industries, including Buncombe County, and over 23 community-based referral agencies like sparse foundation, community action opportunities, the YMI Culture Center, Land of the Sky, and Operation Gateway, just to name a few. So you can see our investment has really panned off over the years, and I thought it would be good to point it out here in the meeting.
All right, great, great update, I appreciate it. Commissioner Wells, anything? All right, I don't have anything to update on either. All right, we do have a couple of announcements. On March 7th at 3:00 PM, the County Commissioners will hold a briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On March 7th at 5:00 PM, the County Commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Is there a need for a closed session? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.